Thank you so much, everyone, for being here. We're gonna get, go ahead and get started. Again, this is our second session. Super excited for the second session. So for this session in political series, we're gonna cover the steps to a bill become a law. Just like the last time, this is going to be introductory kind of conversation. We're not gonna dive deep into all the steps and all the scenarios. But the point here is to get a better understanding, like what are the basic steps to legislation passing through council? And then specifically, how community and us, and how like we can influence that process specifically as it goes through the legislative process. So, basic steps of how bill become a law, and how we as a community can influence that process. Next slide. So, at our last session, we learned that city council and our mayor have a lot of say in the things that govern our daily lives, right? So today, we're gonna learn specifically the important steps to a bill becoming law. So first, let's start with Philadelphia Constitution. So Philadelphia Constitution, or what you probably will hear folks refer to the Home Rule Charter, established offices like city council and the mayor's office. The Home Rule Charter also created the city departments. But more importantly, the Home Rule Charter also created a power needed for those offices to fulfill their responsibilities. The charter also gives Philadelphia City Council the ability to adopt and publish city laws. These laws are called ordinances, most of which are compiled in the Philadelphia Code. And city council can amend or add to the code by enacting an ordinance to amend or add to the code. So, the city charter, the constitution, created offices and departments, like the mayor's office, like city council. It also gave council the power to create laws, and those laws are in the Philadelphia Code. And council can amend the code by passing legislation. So there are several steps that takes place between the time a bill is introduced in council and when it actually becomes part of the city code. So, this is the process we're gonna focus on today. And I just wanna say that it's a process that like, yes, it requires city council action and it requires mayoral action, but more importantly, it requires us as a community to be involved. It is a process that we should be involved in, in fact, from every step of the way, from the time someone thinks about introducing legislation to the enforcement of that legislation. And I also wanna note that like, not every ordinance goes into the Philadelphia Code. We won't cover these, but like, in general, only those things that are like generally ongoing applications are into the Philadelphia Code. Meaning, bills approving like contracts, appropriating money, one-time things don't go into the code. So it's only those things that have general ongoing application that are into the code. So, but we won't focus, we will not focus on contracts or appropriation of money or anything like that. But before we get started, I wanna take us back to a, something that we all probably love, and we acquaint ourselves with Schoolhouse Rock. This, obviously, if you remember this video, it looks at federal legislation. But I want you to watch this short video because there are some similarities to our own process at the local level. So I'm gonna play that video for you now. Can everybody hear this okay?
I think you need to share your computer sound. Share audio. Yeah, you have to share audio. It's, I'm trying to remember where that is.
It's at the bottom of the screen.
Oh, yep, I see it. Sorry about that. Thank you. Try this again.
Woo, you sure gotta climb a lot of steps to get to this Capitol building here in Washington. Well, I wonder who that sad little scrap of paper is.
I'm just a bill. Yes, I'm only a bill. And I'm sitting here on Capitol Hill. Well, it's a long, long journey to the capital city. It's a long, long wait while I'm sitting in committee. But I know I'll be a law someday. At least I hope and pray that I-
Sorry. Are you guys still seeing us?
I'm just a bill. Yes, I'm only a bill. And I'm sitting here on Capitol Hill. Well, it's a long, long journey to the capital city. It's a long, long wait while I'm sitting in committee. But I know I'll be a law someday. At least I hope and pray that I will. But today, I am still just a bill.
Gee, Bill, you certainly have a lot of patience and courage.
Well, I got this far. When I started, I wasn't even a bill. I was just an idea. Some folks back home decided they wanted a law passed, so they called their local congressman and he said, "You're right, there ought to be a law." Then he sat down and rode me out and introduced me to Congress, and I became a bill. And I'll remain a bill until they decide to make me a law. I'm just a bill. Yes, I'm only a bill. And I got as far as Capitol Hill. Well, now I'm stuck in committee and I'll sit here and wait while a few key congressmen discuss and debate whether they should let me be a law. I hope and pray that they will. But today, I am still just a bill.
Listen to those congressmen arguing. Is all that discussion and debate about you?
Yeah, I'm one of the lucky ones. Most bills never even get this far. I hope they decide to report on me favorably, otherwise I may die.
Die?
Yeah, die in committee. Oh, but it looks like I'm gonna live. Now I go to the House of Representatives and they vote on me.
If they vote yes, what happens?
Then I go to the Senate and the whole thing starts all over again.
Oh, no.
Oh, yes. I'm just a bill. Yes, I'm only a bill. And if they vote for me on Capitol Hill, well, then I'm off to the White House where I'll wait in a line with a lot of other bills for the president to sign. And if he signs me, then I'll be a law. I hope and pray that he will. But today, I am still just a bill.
You mean, even if the whole Congress says you should be a law, the president can still say no?
Yes, that's called a veto. If the president vetoes me, I have to go back to Congress and they vote on me again, and by that time, you're sold.
By that time, it's very unlikely that you become a law. It's not easy to become a law, is it?
No. But I hope and pray that I will. But today, I am still just a bill. He signed your bill, now you're a law. Oh, yes.
All right. So, yeah, so at the bottom of your Zoom screen, there should be the icon that says participant. You would be, you could use that to raise your hand. So, just wondering if anybody can tell me some of the things they remember from that video or something you already knew that you noticed in the video? And then if somebody could tell me if there is something you didn't know and you just found out from that video.
You just took me way back, Steve. Good memories, okay? And evidently, my child remembers it too. But I guess I remember most of it, but I guess I've learned that our cities' government kinda runs in a similar way. They introduce a bill, you know, then it goes to, instead of the Senate, goes to the city, the whole, the general assembly of city council. And then the mayor can veto it or approve it. You know, so I guess, you know, I've just realized that there's, well, because of things I've learned recently, it's very similar to our cities' government.
Yep, so I'm gonna unmute Mr. Vine.
Yes, hi. I think that, for me, it was just a reinforcement that the bill starts with us, community people, and it's about something that we see in our communities that we would like to change.
Yep, thank you. Yeah, there's a, there's a lot of similarities, as you said, Miss Anna. The only difference is, right, like, we don't have two chambers, right? It's the city council that makes that, pass the bills, and the mayors don't know what to veto. So we don't have a house or a senate, but it's a similar process in that there's a committee process, and community has a chance to give their input. Margaret, you can share the next slide. Awesome. So let's talk about legislation. Sorry, someone's not muted. Thank you. So let's talk about legislation. So, our city council, they consider legislation in two forms. So, the way our city, the things that our city council considers in terms of legislation are resolutions and ordinances. So, a resolution is something that is used to express the views of city council on a particular topic. While an ordinance directs that a specific action is taken or sets rules for those actions. So that is the difference between a resolution and-
He's muted. I can't hear him. Steve, we can't hear you.
I am so sorry. I don't know why we're having Zoom problems today. Jeez. I don't know how much you guys heard me, so I will go back. All right, so, legislation considered by our city council comes in one of two forms, resolution and ordinances. A resolution is used to express the views of city council on a particular topic, while an ordinance directs that a specific action to be taken or sets rules for those actions. Resolutions are adopted, so you often say, you'll often hear city council say that resolution is adopted. Ordinances are passed. So, before an ordinance can, before an ordinance can pass, I'm gonna mute everyone. Before an ordinance can pass, it's called a bill. When it is passed and is added to the Philadelphia Code, as I mentioned earlier, then it becomes an ordinance. So again, resolutions are adopted, ordinances passed. Before an ordinance becomes an ordinance, it's called a bill and it has to go through a process. Once it's added to the Philadelphia Code, it becomes an ordinance. Next slide. So, let's talk about resolutions. So resolutions, like I said earlier, right, they are used to express a view. They are a form of legislation that city council has to approve. But they are not the same thing as bills or ordinances. So, another thing you'll notice, like, when city council members introduce resolution, they either say, "I have a privileged resolution," or a non-privileged resolution, council president. So what that basically means, a privileged resolution is only authorizing a committee here, a committee to hold hearings, or it is honoring someone or something, right? So, you have a privileged resolution calling on this committee of children and youth to hold hearings on what the poverty rate of single moms is and how that impacts children. Or a resolution to honor Michael Jackson or Gritty. You've seen that, right? Those are the kind of resolutions you will see. Those resolutions, because they're often not controversial, they can be voted on in the same day that they're introduced. So there is a moment in the agenda when they introduce new resolutions, and then, because it's, you know, it's not controversial, it's privileged, they can vote on them the same day. Non-privileged resolutions are pretty much everything else, and those have to be put in the next calendar or next council session to be voted on. They cannot be voted on the same day. Or council president refers them to a committee, and they have to go through a similar process as a bill. You will also see oftentimes, council members ask that the rules of council be suspended so that this resolution could be heard the same day it's introduced. So that can happen. You can suspend the rules on a non-privileged resolution so it can essentially be treated like a privileged one. So those are the two types of resolutions. But the thing I wanna also stress about, no matter what the kind of resolution it is, is that it is usually something that's important to either the council member that's introducing it or the chamber as a body. It does have some legal, some resolutions have legal and policy impact, like a resolution to change the city charter. But overall, resolutions allow council to express the collective voice of the city. And they can play an important role in national conversation or the development of law and policy at various levels of government. And we'll look at a simple resolution in our next session. But I just wanna be clear that resolutions do not create systemic or structural change like a bill does. So, this is a resolution, just quickly. This is a resolution I worked in when I was in city council. We introduced it to honor Jackie Robinson. My chief of staff made one single change to the resolution title that apologized for the racism Jackie Robinson faced in Philly, and it just blew up. Now, mind you, people have honored Jackie Robinson's resolutions before in city council, but because we made that small change, and it just blew up in the national spotlight, and it started a conversation about racism in sports. And as you can see in the bottom right, the council members got to present the resolution during the Jackie Robinson Day event. So like, it didn't make racism illegal. It definitely didn't bring any reparations to the families, but it did start a dialogue. So, and as you notice in all the news clips, even though one council member introduced it and seventeen voted on it, it says that the city of Philadelphia apologizes for racism. Again, this gives city council a power to speak as the collective voice for our city, because we elect them. So, once it passed out of city council, it became that Philadelphia apologizes for racism. So that's an important distinction. So let's talk about ordinances, next. Well, before we, so one thing I wanna mention is that, like, ordinances, right? Like, the Philadelphia Code includes most ordinances, and we talked about the ones that are not included, that pass city council. But before an ordinance become a law, as I said earlier, it's called a bill. And from our video, when the guy, our bill wanted to become a law, well, in Philly, our bills want to be ordinances. There is a process for adding provisions to or amending the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter, the city's constitution, which is the thing I mentioned earlier. But it requires an additional step outside of city council bill approval, approving a bill. Basically, in addition to approving a bill, voters must also approve of the city charter change. And we'll talk about, we'll look at a simple bill and resolution to do a charter change at our next session. But basically, for a bill to become an ordinance and added to the Philadelphia Code, you need council action, you need mayoral action, and you need our involvement. For charter change, in addition to that, you need approval by the voters at the ballot box. If you remember the last election we had in June, you probably saw these questions on the ballot box. The reason these questions came about is a long story, but a bunch of community groups felt like they needed to be a separate office dedicated to enforcing labor laws. And because the original charter did not have a labor office, we created that labor office. But before it can be created, it needed to go to, it needed to go to voters for approval. So if you're gonna change a charter, you will, you will often see these ballot questions, "Should the charter be amended to do X, Y, and Z?" Next slide. So, the steps to become in a bill is often long, but there are important steps we need to remember and always be thinking about. This is, obviously, right, there's a lot of scenarios that we could play out for this session. But I want us to always be mindful of a couple of things when we think about the steps. Truthfully, all of the steps are important. I just wanna be clear, from the moment someone has an idea to the enforcement, every step is important. But there are moments that can decide whether a bill become law or if it does. And I'm thinking about, right, the public hearing, what's its schedule? Like, what is that public hearing like? Who's testifying? What are they saying? And how's that gonna influence council members? And then there's a whole lot of steps between even the public hearing to final passage that moves really quickly sometimes. But there was also important steps, right? Like lobby visits or just like continuing to influence council members for that final vote. But I highlighted those two because I think those two are very crucial moments themselves. And also, between those two moments, there are very crucial moments that could like kill or destroy a bill. So I'm gonna move on for the sake of time on the next one. So, Gail, you can take over, slide. So we're gonna do an activity right now, and I'm gonna have Gail, State Committee and Neighborhood Network walk us through that.
Hi. Can you, did I unmute myself?
Yep.
It's been a hectic day, so.
You're back on mute, Gail. There you go, I got you.
Okay, great. Okay, so, hi, I'm Gail Lonie from Philadelphia Neighborhood Networks. So, I'm going to talk to you about the activity that you guys are gonna do. So the thing is, you're going to break out into breakout rooms, and there is going to be a report back and a note taker. So in your breakout rooms, we have each room listed with notes. If you will look on your screen, and we have already given you the steps for how a bill becomes a law. And what I would like for you to do is number one, designate a note taker and designate a report back person. The note taker will actually put the notes in their breakout group numbers, which will be listed on each one. And you will put your notes there, and the report back person will come back and report back what happened in your group. And the steps are listed for you on the right-hand side of your note-taking screen. So what I really want you to do is to be able to talk to the, speak to the points, and I'm trying to go to, speak to the points where you can have public steps that will influence legislation and how it should be done. Where does the organizing, your community matter? How, where does and how does organizing in your community matters? And come up with strategies to get your bill passed and think about what influences elected officials and policymakers and the public have. So basically, we want your input on how you think and where you think you should be infused in this project and where you could fit in to make legislation happen for you as a community, okay? So we're gonna go-
I was gonna say, and the second slide has all the steps in detail, if you wanna read it too. Yep.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
So I know this is quick. We're gonna give folks about 12 minutes to be, to do, to have discussions, and then we're gonna do about five minutes of report back. I'm gonna break everyone out into groups now. It's okay if you go to someone's slide by accident, I promise. Actually, before I do that, can, Gail, can you drop that link on the chat, in the chat box so everybody has access to it before they go? I want everybody to open the document before you go into the breakout room.
Actually, actually, I'm having technical difficulties.
I got it. Yep, I got you.
I'm sorry.
No worries, got it. All right, so you should be able to open a presentation, and everyone should have access to it. So when you, when I break you out into groups, you'll see, I'll tell you which group number you on. Once you are in your group, I'll tell you which group you're about to join. If you're Group One, for example, once you get on the slide, just make sure you're doing the activity in Group One. All right, I'm breaking everyone now. And you'll have, you'll have a countdown that tells you when it's time to come back. It'll be like a minute countdown. And then I'm gonna hop on from group to group if anyone have any questions, okay? Opening groups now. So everyone should be able to join a group.
Hey, Steve, I'm not going into a room, but only because I'm like entranced right now.
No worries, no worries. Yeah. I was about to assign you to a group.
Yeah, I was like, I declined it, but you're probably just seeing me like hanging out for no reason.
Yeah, right, right. That's cool. Susan, do you, do you want me to put you in a group or are you okay?
I'm okay, Steve.
Okay. So, and Catherine and B Campbell, are you okay too? Okay, I see B went to group. Let me make sure if folks are.
Hey, I seem to be the only person in my breakout room. Is there a way to join a room that has somebody, other people in it? Is there a way to join a room that has somebody, other people in it? Steve, if you're talking, you're muted.
I'm moving you to another breakout room. You should be. It says there are multiple people in there, I'm not. I just moved you, I'm gonna move you to breakout room two. Okay, should, can you join now? For some reason, it's saying that you're not joining, I don't know why, oh, there you go. Five more.
Yep.
Welcome back, everybody. I'm sure there wasn't enough time.
Oh.
You always get us mid-sentence.
That's just how breakout rooms work. Okay, I think everyone is back. Yeah, I think everyone's back, Gail, so.
Okay, so we're all back from our breakout room, so I am having serious technical difficulties.
Okay.
Okay, but I was able to go in one of the breakout rooms and capture some information from breakout room number six. So Margaret, can you share the screen to see if anybody else was able to go in and share their information or?
You could just, you could just have folks just share out group by group, they don't need to share their screen.
Okay, so group one, I don't, I don't know who's where or?
If you just raise your hand, whoever's in group one. Group one wants to report out, I'll just, I'm gonna unmute you and you could just report out like,
Yeah.
what you guys came up with.
Anybody from group one?
Who is your reporter?
Was it?
I don't know if everybody remembers which group they're, they were in, I remember, I don't remember.
You don't remember? I'm gonna do this the easy way, sorry guys.
So, yeah.
I'm unmuting everyone. So if anybody would like to share what they came up with in their group, feel free to unmute yourselves.
So I was in group four, and I think I'm the reporter for our group. It's a little bit difficult without seeing the thing, the notes, but anyway. So the first one was the idea becomes, something about the idea. Law begins as an idea. So certainly, the community is gonna have input in that phase by contacting our city council people. When the members seek co-sponsors, we felt that that was sort of less involvement, except that we can, you know, if the councilperson from one district, not our own, is sponsoring a law, then we can reach out to our councilperson or the at-large and encourage them to co-sponsor. So there's some degree of involvement there. So that's ours, the notes were, let's see, where's that other thing? Introducing, I think we're not really involved, or referring those committee. The public hearings, we can go to the public hearings, you know, and speak or, you know, go with signs to express our view that this bill should become a law. We weren't really clear on what the first reading and the second reading were and whether they were public or not. But I imagine at some point it's public again, and then again, you know, the community has the ability to reach out to our council people and also to attend public meetings. And to reach out to the mayor as it becomes, you know, after the vote, to express our views that he really ought to sign this.
Awesome.
So there's a lot of areas that we can get involved.
Awesome. Yeah, that's great. And, and I like the fact that you said there are a lot of areas where we can get involved. That's the key right there, just knowing that you can influence the bill and thinking as long as you believe that you can, there are a lot of areas, that's a good thing. That's what you want to do, yeah, that's what you want to do. Anybody else?
Hi, we were in group 10, and we pretty much had some similar information from the standpoint of starting at the community level to decide what we wanted, what, what we want to happen for our community. Getting signatures, recruiting others by going door, by going door to door and doing door knocking. Also putting information out on social media to see if there's others who may have similar challenges and want to get involved and help us get the legislation introduced. Also talked about the public hearing, testifying at the public hearing, calling and elect, and emailing our elected officials in order to kind of nudge them. Because we know that there's power, power in numbers. And so when we have the elected officials as well as the community working together, it's hard to say no. We can also hold people accountable, not only our elected officials, but those in the community that, you know, are saying that they want to do something and possibly not. You know, put it, blast it out on social media, let everybody know, look, so-and-so elected official didn't do what they said they were gonna do, and, you know, blast it out and have other people calling them about that. Looking and seeing whether or not I'm missing anything. And team in, in, in group 10, if there's anything that I'm missing, feel free to speak up.
Okay, okay. You guys had some great ideas, because people sometimes forget that the community has a lot of input and a lot of impact. You know, just on each other. And that sometimes is the key, because the more people in the community who, who come together and reach out, that, that's a strong signal, that's a strong signal right there. So I, I like that idea where you talked about the social media, and I like to talk about the door knocking. Because a lot of times you're doing, so I'm in group six, and we talked about doing petitions. And so that door knocking is part of that petition, you know, signing feature. But it's also a one-on-one with your community members. So you get to look them in the eye, you get to explain and how it's going to impact them as well. And, you know, sometimes you gotta go back and forth, because some, some communities are hard, you know, are hard to nudge. But if you keep going back, you know, sometimes you can, you can whittle away at it. And at some point, the light bulb will go on and they'll realize like, wait a minute, this is gonna impact me in such and such a way. And, you know, so I, I might need to get on board this, this, this train wagon. The social media thing is important too, because that brings other people outside of maybe your immediate community. But that community that finds that that bill is important. So when you start hitting that social media, it might not be in your direct neighborhood, but it's in the neighborhood of, yeah, we're all in this together, and this bill can affect me even though I live over here and you live over here, it's something for us. So, yeah, thank you for that. Anybody else?
That was awesome.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, for the sake of time, we have to move along. We have a couple more slides to go through, but great conversation and some of them, great, great suggestions. I'm gonna just take over for the remainder of the, if that's okay, Gail?
Yeah, that's fine.
Awesome. Margaret, you can share the next slide. Awesome, so for the sake of time, I noticed probably somebody on this call who was involved with this, with the Fair Work Week bill. But the Fair Work Week legislation was a law that passed the city council that requires that employers provide service, retail, hospitality, workers with predictable hours and predictable schedules and other protections. You know, for a person like myself who's worked in like Popeyes, McDonald's, Chico's, Wendy's, I worked in all of them. I know firsthand how important it could be when like you're trying to balance life, and you don't know what your schedule's gonna look like day to day, and you might go to work close and it have to be back of work at 6:00 a.m. So like, you know, when someone's, for people who are like single moms, folks who are working multiple jobs at barely livable, well, not livable wage, it could be difficult. So this was in a super crucial legislation that passed. That picture right there of that person not looking amused and telling council to do their job is Margaret, who's doing our slide, she's over the slide city council. So this was a public hearing that we showed up to, to help push the Fair Work Week bill through. Next slide. So, all of you guys already mentioned this, an important first step to pass in legislation. The reason why, right, like, I, I'm not gonna go, I will share all the steps with you guys in detail that, that by activity you guys just did, you'll always have access to it. But the important thing is like, right, in this whole process, is like, how do we build enough power? How do we build enough awareness for this legislation to move through that process? And one of the first steps is always to show public support for passing it, in order to pass legislation, right? You have to wear, raise awareness, you have to organize people around the issue that the legislation is trying to solve. And I think someone you said this, right, petition is also a good way to build a community, like, build a community, a list. Right, like, if you collect thousands of signatures around this issue, you can go back to those people on other issues. You start to build a community that cares about a specific issue. But also, there's other ways petitions could be really powerful. And Stan was involved, so Fair Work Week, Neighborhood Network was involved in a coalition of groups, labor, grassroots organization, community leaders who worked together to pass Fair Work Week. We collected thousands of signatures, and then we did, what did we do with the signatures, Stan?
Well, we took about, well, there were about 500 people or so who signed the petition asking for a fair work week. And we took those petitions to council, the sponsor of the legislation was thrilled. We didn't actually think it was that many signatures, but councilperson Jim was really thrilled that we, we had them. And we took them to council at the time of the hearing and went on to the second floor of council. If everybody's been in council, you'll see there's a balcony, we went up to the balcony and had them taped together, and we dropped them from the second floor down into the main chambers. And we had, we had the sergeants-at-arms scurrying around like crazy, trying to stop this disruptive activity, which only brought more attention to it. And it was, you know, and end of the day, the bill was voted out of committee with a couple of particular council people that, that knew us well, knew our organization well, because most of our members lived in their area. They were on the fence, and we think we, we were told that we helped swing them, so it was really satisfying.
Awesome, so that's right, like, a lot of folks talked earlier about knocking door to door, you can, you know, this was, you know, petition online, this is an online petition. You can, you know, this was, you know, petition online, this is an online petition. You can always use the petitions to go knock door to door. We talked about 10 districts, right, going district to district, talking to community members uh about how this bill will impact their community, also influences district council people. But what Stan just described as using petitions as a direct action, which is like pretty cool, right? Like you collect all these signatures and you make a big public thing about it, which, you know, now council had, they're like, everyone's running crazy, but that that wasn't like an amazing way of using petitions. Um next slide. So I sent everyone um an op-ed that you should have, um I think you should have received in your email, a couple emails I sent. Um if you had a chance to read that op-ed, I just like, so in addition, right, like Stan, talking about collecting a petition, one of the things you can always do to get a bill, to make sure that bill has strong um chance of passing is to make it really public because, let's be honest, elected officials love to press. So when you write op-ads, you have impacted community members, write op-ads, that will definitely influence um the city council legislation. So and we'll hopefully do an op-ed together in one of these sessions. Um so I I'm just curious, anybody who read that op-ed, why do you think Mark Lamont Hill's op-ed was so powerful in helping to get Fair Work Week in Philadelphia? And why does it even matter to get an op-ed?
Well, I think an op-ed is important because it reaches a lot of the community um that you wouldn't reach otherwise. And of course, now the the uh enquires online, there's some predictions, so you're hitting a lot of different people.
Yep, yep. I mean, one, yeah, so the op-ed is like, has a large reach. Um you put in public media and, you know, city council and elected officials, they want the media to be nice to them and they they want to be treated nice by the media, but they also want to be seen as doing a good job. So you put this to the masses, now they have to vote the right way. But I also want to point out that what was powerful in Mark Mark Lamont's op-ed was that, right, like, here's a local business owner, here's a black man who grew up in, like, was raised in two parts of Philadelphia, as you could see, um who has a local business in Germantown, saying he supports giving his workers better hours, right? So if you had opposition from businesses, you basically just squashed that because you just used a business as an example. Um someone who's from Philadelphia, who's doing good in the community, is saying, yes, I want my employees to have better hours and better schedules. Um he also makes the more argument like this is impacting black and brown folks mostly, right? And that is a powerful thing um to, for council to go against. Uh so it's always important to have community leaders and impacted folks front and center on every issue. Uh next slide. Great. Um I, I was, for the sake of time, we don't have time to watch the video, but it's, you know, city, we we talked about public hearings. I, the only thing I will say about public hearings is like, what's important is not someone's an expert. What's important is not someone's like a policy walk or coming in with statistics or numbers. Stories are super powerful during city council hearings and just being yourself, providing your lived experience is what's important, right? Storytelling can be a very effective tool um to bring our own personal experience into like the collective experience and a and a collective vision, which then forces folks to create policy around that. Um so like, I know nothing about this woman, but just seeing that I could see the passion and I could see what like, you know, the thing she's, how passionate she is about what she's speaking about. Um in our next session, we'll watch a public testimony. But what's important is like lived experience, your own personal story, how that legislation would impact you in a negative or positive way. Um great, I think that is, we made it basically on time. Um sorry about all the technical difficulties. We will get, I think I'm just gonna open up the Zoom so we won't have any issues anymore. I really, really apologize about that. Um I think that cut up, cut about seven minutes into our time, so sorry. Um but thank you for joining me. Um the only thing I will say is, uh going forward, all of these sessions are talking about a time where we didn't have COVID. So I'm gonna share my screen really quickly. Um so just to show you guys, so a lot of this stuff is like not, we can't do right now, like go to a public hearing, drop petitions on the second floor because city council is not meeting. Um but I just want to end on saying like, you know, to be effective, council members need us. They need effective working relationship with us, um the community groups, the voters, um but they also need press and other elected officials. So and of course, they have relationship with lobbyists, special interest group and rich people uh and lobbyists who are working for corporations and rich people, right? So they also have relationship with council members. At the end of the day, in order for politicians to represent us better, we need to tell them what our concerns and our ideas. And this is what this is all about. Um I'm going to quickly show you guys how to um register to speak at city council going forward because we are in times of COVID. So council is not meeting right now and usually you can walk into council, as I said before. Once the, when the session start, to your left, there's a table, you sign up, but we can't do that. Um so this is how you sign up a city council. So all you have to do is go to the website, phlcouncil.com. There's a stated meeting, which is the council hall, the the like, the when they need to vote on bills, all the final bills. It gets a little more confusing with the committee hearings. So to testify to a committee public hearing, go here. Um it'll tell you just the steps. Basically, you need to contact the speaker of that, uh the the chair of that hearing, the chair of that committee, wherever the um the bill is in, that's having the public hearing. So for example, if it's a hearing that's happening in a housing committee, you have to contact Jamie Gaultier by 3:00 PM the day before the hearing um by email or phone. And then you just have to give them your full name, your telephone number, and what is the bill or resolution number that you will be addressing. And you could do this by email or phone number. The way you find out what bills or resolutions are are being heard or when is the committee hearing, you just go here to the calendar. So this calendar is printed, I can't tell when, so see like the Committee of Rules has a hearing coming up on October 9th. There you go. So here is our hearing, we're gonna be following. You will get an email from me after this session, talking about three bills that we're gonna be following as as a group together. These three bills are currently in um in a committee of the whole. Um where's the committee of the whole? October 9th, for some reason, it's not the same committee of the whole. All right, so let's look at the Committee of Housing and Homes. All right, you just pull up the agenda for October 9th. This is October 9th, yep. All right, and it tells you all the bills are resolu- so you see this? Hold on, hearing at 1:00 PM and it just tells you, you can watch it online, of course, it tells you how and it tells you all the the three bills that are gonna be heard. These are the bills we're gonna be following. They're currently in committee, they were introduced September 10th. You'll get an email about this, so no need to look at all this. What's important is, in order to speak on those bills, you need to call this number or email Max by 3:00 PM on October 8th. Um when I send you the email, if you're interested, definitely sign up and then I will call you personally and we will workshop and go through it together. Uh so these are three important bills that were introduced to protect renters because of COVID-19. One of the bills basically made it a moratorium on evictions until December 31st, so no one will get kicked out of their homes. One of the bills essentially made it that people can't be charged um late fees for Mason payments. Um and then one of the bills basically allows for folks to get into a payment plan with their landlords if they're having issue making payments. And well, I'll share the bills with you and everything um in my email. But that is how you look up, this calendar will always have the agenda. The only thing to know about this agenda for city council as a whole, right, October 8th, this is a city council as a whole meeting. Um they don't have their agenda up yet. Uh but I'll give you a perfect example, this was city council today. These are, and I will also send you this agenda with what happened to these bills. But today's city council had a stated meeting, which is the whole body, not a committee meeting. These were the bills on final passage, meaning they went through committee, they had the first, second reading. They were to be, um I'm sorry, they had their first reading, this is their second reading and final passage, they were gonna be voted on today. Resolutions were adopted, bills were passed, and the public has an opportunity, had an opportunity to testify on all of them. Um so this is what happened today. These are a whole bunch of bills that and resolutions that were addressed today. Um I'll answer questions, but all I'm, the only thing, other than I think I'm asking folks is, there's a survey here that we would like for all of you guys to complete if you can, and then you could just hop off. But of course, if you cannot, I will also share the survey with you. Um and we can stick around for some questions if, for about, while, for another five minutes while folks do the survey. Margaret, you want to go to the next slide?
There aren't any more slides, right?
There's one more with the link, I think.
Oh.
It's, it's fine.
Okay.
Yeah. Um I'm gonna, Stephanie, yeah, the link should be on the on the slide somewhere. If you go to click the image, the link is on there. If you can drop it in the chat, that'll be nice.
I could get it down there, yeah.
Steve, I want to do a little.
Yes.
Commercial message, which is relevant, actually.
Please do.
Philly Neighborhood Networks uh has worked uh as a lead organization in the Philadelphia Public Banking Coalition, which is trying to get a public bank from Philadelphia to take the city's money out of Wall Street and put it in its own bank. This has happened, uh this has been what, the way North Dakota has handled its money for over 100 years, but it's the only state or jurisdiction in the US which has its own bank. We want Philly to be the next. Um so there's a hearing on this pursuant to a resolution, you know, one of those resolutions which called for hearings. Um and uh it's taking place on Monday uh from 1:00 to 5:00. Uh and you can, you can tune in um either through the uh city council website or on channel 64 to see how, see how that goes.
Awesome. Thank you, Stan.
What time was that on Monday?
Starting at 1:00 o'clock. It'll be probably from some, something like 1:00 to 5:00. City council times are all estimates, but approximately 1:00.
We hope.
Yeah.
Awesome. Uh the survey is in a chat box. Um feel free to complete the survey. Um but other than that, um unless you guys have more questions for us, we'll see you at the next session. Um we'll make sure the next session is open to everyone, so there's no registration or getting in issues.
Steve, I don't have a question, but I have a comment. Um I do know that, you know, petitions can be, you know, the start of bringing attention to situations because I did that years ago and went door to door, well, with my my legs were better, you know, but um and the the right thing to do was bring it to public attention. You know, when I went to a uh a town hall held by J.R. Street, you know, presented, you know, the petitions, you know, on camera, you know, you're right, that is the way, you know, to go. And I love the fact that y'all threw the uh petitions down to the floor.
That was fun.
Yep. And it was during a committee hearing where we didn't, we didn't know if you had to vote, right? Like and we swayed some people to change their votes.
They rolled Scotch tape together, so it was, it didn't just flow, flow around. They rolled Scotch tapes that looked like a big banner or something.
I love it.
Stephanie, your hands was up? Sorry, can you unmute?
I have a question.
Sure.
A lot of, we get a lot of landlords um calling and some of their concerns is that if their tenants aren't paying, how will they pay their mortgage? Then is there any bills or any solutions as far as that's concerned?
No, there's no bills. A lot of, I mean, I'm a homeowner. I I have relief from Wells Fargo, although the banks are terrible. Um I've been on forbearance for about six months now. Um so there's a lot of protections, I mean, both at the federal level, um but just banks doing a lot of stuff to protect homeowners, right? Like land ownership in this country has always been valued. So like if you own land, the government finds a way to protect you. But tenants, of course, are just left out um to fend for themselves. So these, these pieces of legislation, right, like they're just trying to protect people from being homeless and so the city won't have enough, like, so we won't have encampments all over the city, right? Like we need people to be safe in their homes. It's also, it's also not smart to kick people out because in order to stay socially distanced and fight COVID, people have to be in home to stay home, right?
No, I'm not, I'm not saying kick someone out of their home, but just a solution for a landlord because, you know, people still have to pay the bills where the tenants may be staying, water bills, gas bills, whatever.
Yeah, so I think at the state level, when we, when when city council passed the first eviction moratorium, the state also followed up with a eviction moratorium on um tenants and also a foreclosure moratorium, which means no one could be foreclosed on. So again, this is a mechanism for landlords to be able to keep their homes because they're not gonna be foreclosed on. Um and the eviction moratorium is also protecting um tenants. And honestly, city council has very little power in terms of like being able to legislate mortgages and all of that other stuff. So it's kind of hard for them to to be able to do that. That's why it's important for the federal government to step up, which they have done, to step up to protect homeowners more so than um tenants, so.
There, there is a mortgage foreclosure diversion program in the courts. So if you do get caught up in a foreclosure proceeding, uh they will um basically send you to mediation and that will probably result in some, some kind of workout arrangement.
Yeah, I I did um read up on it, where they take the mortgage and put it on a back end. But the thing is, the taxes and like, you know, other bills that's accumulating, that's my concern, too.
I believe that's why um the Bill, the Rent and Mortgage Cancellation Act of 2020 introduced by Ilan Omar is very important. You know, because i- in fact, will, you know, um excuse you from those, those, those monies, you know, because if you didn't have it then, you probably won't have it now, you know, um, you know, especially with, you know, things adding up, you know, and.
Now say that bill one more time. You said it was what?
Um I put it in the chat, is the Rent and Mortgage Cancellation Act um of 2020 um introduced by um Ilan Omar.
Thank you.
And also the subsidy.
But it was, it was referred to the um, the Committee of Finance, you know, but that's where, you know, I, well, I started researching something else, excuse me, so I'm, you know, that's where my knowledge is. But I was, I'm, I will find out, you know.
Thank you.
If they've discussed it and, you know, what actions, but I do want to, you know, make sure that our representatives, you know, in Pennsylvania do support this, you know. But I want to see who the, who the members of this committee are because we want to make sure it at least is introduced.
Yeah, we did, we did. Also, the people that put in for, to get their rent subsidized where they got money, if somebody was a homeowner, that means that the government was then paying a portion of their rent. It was like $750 and it went up to $1,500. So that was also a way that a um, a property owner could get their mortgage paid because it was getting paid from another entity.
Yeah, but did they just send it directly to the homeowner, or the landlord person?
Yes.
Hi, yeah, this is Catrice. I was gonna mention that actually next. It was a COVID-19 Emergency Rental Assistance Program and it helped tenants be able to pay their rent. And I believe the money goes straight to the landlord, but the landlord had to agree to be part of it. Um unfortunately, just yesterday, the application for phase two closed. But if you look on the website, it looks like they're working on more legislation to contain the program and do another phase. So just something to think about, to call your elected officials on a state level and a city level to push for that to go through because people still need help. Thank you. I put a link in the chat. Thank you so much.
Hopefully, please share the survey with, um please feel free to do a survey. I can't believe we're still on 14 minutes after, continue the conversation. Um also, all the, all the past city council hearings are online now. Um so usually after a council hearing about the next day, you can, um you can see them. Actually, I'm gonna share with you guys where to go. You can usually, it's, I would recommend watching one council hearing because sometime they are often entertaining. Uh they're often, not sometimes, there are, there, there's always some moment that brings me joy. Uh so if you go, I'm gonna share my screen real quick. So if you go to, again, this website is everything, but if you go to legislation and hearings, you could do, you, this is how you watch live, watch council lives, channel 64. But if you go to, if you pass hearings, um this YouTube channel has like budget. this YouTube channel has like budget hearings, stated meetings, which is the meetings where all council, all 17 council members meet to vote and make decisions. And then also all the committee hearings. Screen. All the past committee hearings. So these are all the committee hearings, but, and then the recent ones, special committee hearings, committee on children and youth, so you can see all the hearings just by going here. So if you go to stated, you go stated meeting of best 2019, 2020.
Steve, I have a question.
Yep.
So
Sorry.
Council people are aware of how many people are watching?
That's a good question, and I love that you brought that up. So they do, I, I don't think, Stan, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think text, it's not like a Zoom thing, from what I'm seeing, they, they're engaging with each other and then when you, like, when you call, you can't even, they, they can't even, you can't even see yourself, right? It's just, all you see is the council members?
I, I've seen it different ways recently. In some of these sessions, I have seen witnesses' faces and others not, so.
Oh, I have not seen, wow.
Yeah, yeah, so we're going to, we're going to try to get our faces on camera on Monday at this hearing I mentioned. It's going to start off, by the way, in terms of entertaining, there's also going to be a cartoon video in that, by the way, a short one. So I think that the technology exists, but they don't always use it for some reason.
But it's not like in city hall where they're aware of how many people are in the room.
Right.
There's no, that's
What we did to make, to, you know, technology, we held our own, like, my job at 1PA, we held our own, like, watch city council. And I, and I see some members on here could speak to that. And then we were on a Zoom call just like this, and then we shared the screen and watched council together. And that where we were able to say, 80 peoples came to city council to watch city council to feel like we showed up. You know, whether council person, people know that or not, that's a different story, but it made us feel like we packed city council with 80 people. And then we, you know, we promoted it as such. So there are ways to like, especially when you're in the midst of like trying to get legislation passed, so like, to keep that pressure going, you just have to keep being innovative, unfortunately, in this time.
My name is Catrice, I wanted to ask again the question, what is like a, is there anybody that, do you know that's getting people together virtually to attend the hearing? Like, so we can like show up in number, is there like, on virtually to do that? So like, are any particular organizations organizing people to show up? So that it's not just one person talking about a topic, it's like 80 people, like you said? Is anybody like physically, I mean, making that like a, a point to do? To organize people so we go amass virtually to these different city council hearings?
Yeah, we just did it that one time. I don't know if anybody else is doing it. We, yeah. We did it during the time when the, the housing bills were going to pass in June, but I don't know, no one's doing it consistently every Thursday or for every meeting to like post public hearing.
That's what I was thinking about, like, how can, I'm curious, anybody took that on to gather people for different subjects? For people to just come and voice their opinion, because then they'll start to see who really, what the, what the issues are.
You love to talk about doing that? I love when people come up with good ideas.
Yeah, so you have 80 people saying, so we need a phase three, because I can't pay my rent and my, and my landlord needs money and landlord can't pay the mortgage and we're going to end up homeless, all of us. So we need a phase three, and you have 100 people saying we need a phase three on the state level. And even more so on a city level, I feel like can push them into the direction they need to go for different things.
Once again, I think that shows the importance of that bill, you know, because it would help for mortgages and for renters.
Yeah, Catrice, I would love to talk to you about our meeting with Dwight Evans to support that legislation that Ms. Sider is talking about. So can you drop your info, just drop your information and the chat will love to follow up with you? Because I think we, we, yeah, that's definitely something we should think about doing, just more public gatherings to watch city council.
I can email directly to you.
Okay, great, perfect.
And I think the first one we could try, when is that hearing? Isn't it?
October 9th is the hearing, the committee hearing.
I don't know, that's a lot of time, but that might be the first one to test it out, just with the people in this space, if it's something you care about. Maybe we can all work with Tanata and Steve to like show up for that, just to testify how that would help people as me as a tenant, people as landlords, because we are taught to treat each other as the enemy.
Yep.
But one can't survive without the other, so we need to stop treating each other like that as landlords and tenants.
Yeah, so I'd love to have a comment, yeah, so I will follow up with you and then make sure you get connected with Ms. Tanata, she's awesome. Great. All right, I'm going to send everyone the survey and more information about the bills and then the, the activity map, so you have everyone's thing. Since everyone didn't have a chance to report back, you'll have everyone's answers and questions. And I'm going to send a few handouts that also clarifies the steps to how it will become a law. So thank you so much to everyone that showed up. Someone asked if we unfortunately did not record the last meeting, unlike this one, I just figured it out to record to the cloud and not to the local computer. So this one was recorded, but the last one was not recorded, unfortunately. But I am going to go back and record the last one in a way that makes sense to be able to still share out to folks. But this one was recorded and will be shared out as well, I'm going to send some handouts. So really appreciate you guys, going to end the meeting now. Awesome. Glad it was so much exciting conversation. Appreciate you, guys. All right, take care.
Good night, everyone.
And Steve, I sent you the email in the chat.
Sorry, awesome, appreciate it.
Thanks.
No problem.
Bye.
Thank you.
No problem, bye.
Bye.